Mr. Potter.
Here.
All are present.
If there's your comments, I'm gonna have Rodney Creach, who is our, gonna be our new state representative next year for District forty. Uh, go ahead and come on up and say a little something if you want to.
Yeah, just introduce yourself and if you have anything.
Yeah, I just wanna give a very small introduction. Um, I'm not gonna be your new state rep until twenty twenty-five. Um, but, you know, I'm wanting to get ahead of the curve and um, start spending, I've been spending quite a bit of time in my new district. And uh, Germantown, Germantown Township in Miami's burger, the new areas to my district. I'll have the whole western portion of Montgomery County, all of Preble County and then part of Butler County. Um, started my political career as a township trustee in Twin Township. Um, I'm a third generation township trustee. Fell in love with uh, service, public service and uh, after seven years as a township trustee, I was county commissioner for six years. Um, I'm now in my fourth year as a state rep. And uh, more or less just wanting to, you know, put a face to the name and if you hear my name now, you'll at least know what I look like and you have my number. Um, so if there's anything you need along the way, uh, if there's any place you want me to be, you know, one of the things I'm really trying to do. Um, I like getting engaged in the community and being active in the community. So if there's an event in Germantown, Germantown Township or something. Um, where you think I need to be at, please reach out to me and let me know and I'll, I'll be there if I can, but looking forward to serving uh, serving you guys in twenty twenty-five, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming. I, you've definitely already shown more interest than our current and uh, great representative and state senator, so I appreciate you stopping by.
Well, I'll tell you this, and I, and I tell everybody this and I'll back it up. If you invite me to something, I get my phone out, I check my calendar.
Yeah, cuz I.
And if you invite me to something, I'll be there. If, if I can't be there, I'll let you know, but, you know, I, I feel like, if, and you guys know this, I mean, you do it too. I mean, in order to serve the people, you have to know who they are. And the better you know the people, you can, the better you can serve them, so, just pretty simple.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, but yeah, look forward to, I know a couple of you and look forward to getting to know the rest of you.
Alright. Well, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for.
As long as you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Anyone else like to comment? Heard one comment?
Yes.
Say your name and your address, please.
Okay. Time I remember was Jeff Dondero at six, seven, nine, three, Diamond Mill Road, Germantown, four, five, three, two, seven. Reason I'm here is just following up on last meeting. Um, our concerns about the uh, violation of uh, I guess you could, what would you call it, zoning code. I have in Germantown, moving up to the top of the hill, trying to run a business out of there. Lot of uh, oil trucks and uh, safety that goes with that, and the trucks are turning into that property. Uh, there is a blind spot. And they're coming out, as a matter of fact, I've, you don't see car briefly, looking down the hill, coming out of town and come up. They're doing fifty, fifty-five mile an hour, not a lot of reaction time. We've had near misses, we haven't had any accidents yet, have we? But I think one of your officers came out one time for a complaint. But uh, just wanted to know, what's the latest and the greatest? It appears as though they have moved back down the marathon for the most part, not totally, but for the most part. There is still activity up there and I don't know what they're up to. Uh, biggest fear now is, word is, you know, they're gonna relocate that, the transfer station. Mean, there would have to be an underground tank somewhere. And that concerns us. Because that's just another uh, danger to our aquifer. Uh, it's not supposed to be a business, it's supposed to be storing farm equipment. I have seen one tractor, one harbinger. One uh, big bale trailer or anything up there, so, anything but, what's going on? Well, you backed it, you guys to tell us, uh, what's the latest and the greatest. Didn't push from other people now. And I told him I would represent, I, I would be here, otherwise you'd have had more people, so. Thank you.
So the notice of violation was dated from uh, three fifteen and that was sent. We received a letter back from Mr. Legate's attorney, basically saying that there is no, there is no business uh, is conducted on the side, is merely garage, vehicles are parked.
You're.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, basically his attorney said that no business is being conducted at the side, it's merely a garage in which vehicles are parked. There are no storage tanks containing fuel oil. So basically he's saying that they're, they're not gonna move up there as far as tanks, it's really the only reason there are, the only use they use for that building is to store the, the trucks overnight.
In, in the winter time.
In the winter time.
When it's cold. So what they, what they do. Oh, they.
That's still kind of a gray area, isn't it?
They come. So he did not move, I, I talked to Mr. Legate. So they did not move this year till it gets cold, they did not move up there, he told me he thought was between Christmas and New Year's, that's when he went up there this year. And they, just for, make sure it wouldn't be cold anymore, these will stay until April first, which is apparently about what they did, as far as I know. Um, they, they're, they're, that's his, that is at um, agriculture building. Um, that he, he is actually going to build his house up there, there will never be a business there. That's where he's going to move to in a few years. Um, but he does, in the winter time, park his trucks in there, um, just to keep them out of the weather. Um, if he needs to change the oil, something like that, has to repair, he does that there too. Just to keep from happening, so he can lay on a concrete floor instead of a gravel driveway. But um, he's, there is a wa- oil water separator that he put in. Just to make sure that if there was any kind of runoff or any snow melt or anything that come off the trucks, it goes into a water oil separator before, cuz he's got drains in the barn.
Inside the building.
Inside the building. Um, he absolutely is not moving his business up there whatsoever, that's not true, is what he told me.
Are the trucks going up there? Do they have oil in them? Do they have diesel in them?
Yes, yes, they have diesel in them.
That's the danger. It's a combustible, it's not flammable, I understand that. Somebody makes a mistake and you get a fire in there, he has no fire apparatus in there, okay, uh, to put it out. It would leave the city to roll up there, he would have to put chemicals on that kind of a fire. Those are the chemicals that'll absolutely destroy the aquifer.
Is he bringing his trucks back empty at the end of the day?
I have, have no idea, I could not answer that. If they are, if they're empty or.
He pulls out in the morning with them.
If they're empty or.
I would, I, it would make no sense for him to bring, pull up in there.
I, I, I can't answer that, that, that did not come up.
Okay.
Um, he said he's never, he says he got cameras on all his trucks. Um, he has no reason to ever back in off the road, he's never done that. Um, welcome to look at his cameras, I drove up there today and went up there. He has a very wide driveway, wide opening, and a, a big area that, a big area to turn around back there. I drive a truck, I used to drive a truck for a living, the last thing in the world, truck driver wants to do it, back up, so, I don't.
Exactly what they were doing when they started.
But, maybe it was when they started or something, but, he's not, said, I'm absolutely not backing anything up, so, and to, off the road. Um, said I got cameras, there, there's just no reason to back in off the road with the trucks, cuz there's plenty of room to turn around up at the building.
Sorry, I'd like more of six, eight, oh, three, Diamond Mill Road.
Yes.
I live next door to Jeff, and we're seeing the trucks going in and out every day, just like a business. They start at six in the morning, they haul out, I bring them all back in, you got traffic there on top of that hill and.
That, that, that.
Your officer sit up there for a day.
That, that is absolutely true, that was true from around Christmas time to the first of April, while it was cold. He's no longer, he's moved all his trucks back down to the marathon station, wherever his business is down there. Just right now, there's, there's any trucks parked, I, when I, there was no trucks parked there, no cars there when I was there an hour ago.
Last Thursday there was, I, I've just returned to town, so last Thursday.
Well, that, like I said, he, he stayed there till, he told me he was gonna stay there till the first of April, is what he told his guys, and then he was moving back down. And he, he never, he doesn't move, he doesn't have a certain time that he moves to the business, just whenever it gets cold. So, he said he thought this year it was between Christmas and New Year's when he started parking his trucks up there because of the cold.
Does the group feel that's a safe area for vehicles to go in and out at crest of a hill?
Well, I, I have a F two fifty truck, I pulled out of there, I could see, good, I could see where it would be a problem in a car. He's even higher in a, in them trucks than he, than a car would be or that I am in a pickup truck. As far as him seeing cars coming.
Yes, he may be able to see, but will somebody see him coming down the road, Diamond Mill heading north, I don't think they have a chance.
You mean hit, when he's pulling out, and he would be pulling out in front of somebody, and he can see, he can see from the top of the hill, he can see, he would, he would have to pull out in front of them, there would be, I mean, I don't know why you would pull out in front of somebody, you can see.
An accident, same accident.
Yeah, that's, but you know, it, it's no different than him pulling into all these farmers, all this construction, all the houses throughout the township that he delivers fuel to. He's, he delivers fuel to half the houses in Germantown that has fuel, I mean, it's, it's just pulling out the driveway like everybody does.
But with six or seven trucks at a time, in the morning and in the evening.
I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, I'm, I'm just trying to say, I think from his point of view, higher up in the truck, it's not uh, it's, it's hazardous as it would be in a car.
God, he has no concern for the safety of the employees and their private vehicles when they come in in the morning and go out at night, they can't see, I'll tell you that. I couldn't see, I'm in an expedition.
Yeah, I don't. I don't know what to say about that, I don't know.
But that would be.
I, maybe it's worth it to them to get into a warm truck or something, I don't know, or, I don't know what to say about that. So, but I, all I can say is, I mean, uh, according to the minutes we had, it was about them moving the business up there and putting tanks up there. Was part, was part of, well, they're not moving the business up there, they was parking vehicles, yes, but they're not moving the, the, moving the company up there.
Well.
It will not be moving up there.
The owner would be staying at the little hut next to Marathon, that's where he dispatches from, he was up dispatching them. In the morning, that's where he got the big red pickup truck and we know who he is, he knows who we are and.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying he, I'm just saying, he's not, you, you have said he was moving the business up there and moving tanks up there. So that's not happening, he's not moving his business up there, that's going to be where his house is one of these days. And he's not going to be moving his rack per se, where they put all the fuel in the trucks, it will not be, it will not be loading any trucks up there at that location.
Alright, pulls them up loaded.
I, I, I can't imagine he is though, why, cuz you're going out for the day, why would you, you're not gonna fill up a truck at the end of the day.
I, I have no idea, I, I can't answer that question, so I know, I don't know. I see what, I see you.
Yeah, alright, I've seen that.
But I just don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I assume, why would he, that would make no sense to take a full truck up that hill, up his driveway, why would you, you wouldn't want to wait in your own driveway.
Uh, just, I'm just thinking of from, or, yeah, on the concrete, I, I can't imagine.
Or he's prepping for the following day to go out early.
Yeah, but I.
Again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, all I can know is he says that he has a skid steer in there with a bush hog, they mows that. Mows and waterways there, there's twenty-four acres or something that is there. Um, he's not doing anything that he doesn't do all over the township, as far as pulling people's driveway and, and unloading fuel.
Um, he is storing vehicles up there. Depending upon the day and the activity, they could be full, they could be half full or whatever. It's something that, if it ever caught on fire, our department would have to go up there and put foam on it, and at that point in time, our aquifer is dead. Right, cuz it, it'll come right down that hill, comes both sides of Diamond Mill. And then it takes a harder turn on, outside his property or, or it's Germantown, goes into a ditch, empties at the little twin creek. Eventually, empties at the little twin. To me, that's an unthinkable thing, you don't wanna think that that's gonna happen, but if it does happen, the guys are in trouble, we're in trouble, he's in trouble. I hope everybody's got a good insurance back, because if there is a problem, it's gonna be catastrophic. And there's gonna be a lot of work. It's a risk that you should, in your mind, make sure it's been mitigated or eliminated.
I understand.
Well, it sounds like at this point, they're not gonna have the trucks up there till, again, no matter what happens, until.
Right, un- unless, he says, if, if you don't fuck that, change the oil or something that he, he does. Uh, he's not saying that they'll never be up there, they're not up there parked.
Yeah.
They're not up there parked during the summer. But, I don't know.
We live there, we go monitor.
Monitor, absolutely. So. I, I didn't quit, make the thing. And we got it, we did get a letter from his lawyer saying that he did not, was not moving his business up there, no, not planning on it. Okay.
So again, I think the question that hasn't been brought up is, is the use of that barn.
Agriculture?
Yeah, is, is the, is that, that a permitted use for an ag, aggie zem barn? So you can say, you know, that he really isn't. Cuz again, it's not necessary, it's not basically agricultural equipment that he's, that he's storing.
He has agricultural equipment in there right now.
But he has, yeah, equipment in there, yeah, so.
You keep the doors down so you can't see, we have to go by it when the doors open, and boy, they run to put that door down.
Um, he told me there was a skid steer with a bush hog on it, uh, in there right now, I don't know.
I'm just, and I, I. This all started on a false pretense. Farm equipment storage, uh, oil trucks or diesel trucks, coverage for any purpose. So.
Well, one thing I, I do think that gets tricky too is, could he, I don't know, can he claim agriculture because he delivers agricultural fuel?
Because we got in trouble years ago.
Township did with a, was it a landscaping business that was trying to claim agriculture on seven twenty-five? Um, and it ended up in a mess. Um, that was before I got here, so we're twenty twelve, sometime in that area, but it, it ended up not good. Um, because, but because the, the agriculture is so broad, which you can, like the agritourism in Ohio, if it says agriculture, that, they find ways to make it fit, and then you can't do anything about it, so I think that's, that's a question maybe the attorneys need to figure out is, is he considered an agricultural business as he does deliver agricultural fuel to most of the people in the area? I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question.
I would ask some of the other townships around and have somebody just like you. What are they doing, okay?
Well.
Problem is, they may not be worried about being on top of an aquifer at top of the hill.
Right.
Like we, we are. So. I feel he came under a false flag, built under false flag. And was operating, so we have called him on it.
I, it's come up last winter, didn't it?
Started.
Started, and then it was gone all summer.
Oh, it was in and out, not as bad.
Well, like I said, he, he said he'd go in there if he needed to prepare something, lay on the concrete floor instead of in a gravel driveway, or if it's raining.
It was a progressive process.
So, and then.
Get the driving in condition, use on a regular basis.
Well, he assured me he is, will not be up there during the summer, he said, he's just not doing it, there's no need to be. The only reason he was up there was in the winter time to have his trucks out of, when, out of cold and out of frost in the winter time.
That's a nice story.
Well, that's what, that's what he's doing.
Having a problem with his rent rate where he was at, they were gonna raise the rent on it, he was gonna move. That's what we were first told when we started asking questions.
I, I went ahead and uh, wrote up some things about this whole case, let me go ahead and read it if you don't mind me, don't mind.
That's fine.
Background, the parcelment question was purchased by the property owner John Legate on four, two, four, twenty twenty. Landowner applied for an agricultural use declaration for a pole barn, fifty feet by eighty feet for proposed use, storage of equipment and supplies. The agricultural use declaration states that in order to qualify for an agriculture exemption, the structure must be sited on a parcel of five acres and more, which is twenty-three acres, so. By signing the declaration, the property owner certifies that the structure is used solely for agricultural, no personal, personal use whatsoever. The zoning permit was granted on two, seven, twenty twenty-one. It's far back on, as two, fourteen, twenty twenty-two, a resident complained about the landowner using the barn to store his oil trucks. These complaints were discussed at a three, twenty-four, twenty twenty trustee meeting. Zoning inspector at the time, Haley Sewell, left a note that stated, spoken property owner, he is not moving his business from Route Four. On four, eight, twenty-two, I spoke with the resident that initially made the complaint. Nice, open names in it, city hasn't seen a lot of activity wise at Diamond Road, I asked him if he'd let us know if there is a continuing problem. Complaints were received again dating back to one, twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, about the owner storing trucks, there were no photos showing trucks on the property. At the three, eleven, twenty twenty-four meeting, trustee meeting, which is last month, the resident made the initial complaint, ma- made the initial complaint, presented five zoning violations complaint forms, as well as six photos confirming that fuel, fuel trucks were indeed on the property at sixty-five, ninety Diamond Road. Notice of violation dated three, fifteen, twenty-four, was sent to the landowner detailing violations and asking the owner to discontinue the use of the building for any business activity. Letter, letter dated three, twenty-six, twenty-four, was received by the zoning, zoning office from the attorney representing Mr. Legate. I contacted our legal representative on, on four, two, to discuss the letter from Mr. Legate's attorney. Counsel stated that the decision came down to this, is it, is they permitted use of an aggie zem barn? Trustee needs to stand by the violation or dismiss the violation. Trustees also received guidance from our counsel via email on four, one, twenty-four, that stated that the attorney's letter should be deemed as an appeal to the violation, and the trustees need to determine if the letter has merit and if the violation should be enforced. According to Mr. Legate's attorney, no, thirty, no business is contacted on the, conducted on the site, it's merely a garage and its vehicles are parked. So the only violation that is relevant, relevant seems to be whether the parking of fuel trucks at the site is a permitted use of a structure that by the agricultural use declaration states is strictly used for agricultural purposes. Is the enforcement of the, uh, Germantown Oil Company does not have an alternative, does have an alternative to storing the fuel trucks at twenty-two, eighty-two, Dayton, Germantown Road as it has for years. Doing so would allow the notice of violation to be missed, dismissed, and allow nearby residents to have their safety concerns with it. Basically discussion, so, I mean, are, are you guys comfortable keeping an eye on it or?
We will keep an eye on it, you know that.
Yeah.
But.
We can always reissue the violation.
How many violations do you reissue if there's about it?
Yeah.
Well, he's moved out now, so he's.
He has lights on.
So I think April come, that's why he moved out, so.
Uh, yeah, right, we're not buying that.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Because there, there's no reason to have the trucks up there if he's not moving and it's not cold, so. It just makes sense, is what I'm getting at, is why he moved out and able, same as he did last week.
Still is a concern.
Well, there is a concern, I'm not saying there's not a concern, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying he has moved out as of now.
It reduces the risk that it doesn't eliminate this.
I, I don't, I don't disagree. But, we wanted him to move out and he's moved out, so. I don't.
Yeah.
Unless he comes back, then we'll have to revisit, I guess.
Well, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Probably correct.
We just have to monitor, keep monitoring this, because I, based on his actions, I don't trust him.
Okay.
Okay.
So, he might be a good guy, but he's not playing fair.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, thanks, Mike.
Dr. Paul, can I get a copy of that?
Uh, yeah, I'll get it, see after we're done with that stuff.
Since you read it, I need to have it for the minutes.
Okay, Jeff, thanks a lot. And bring my case back.
Get your.
So, um, I think at least at this time, we may be stay the violation, monitor the situation.
Yeah.
At this time, what?
This time we'll stay the violation and then continue to monitor, so it, you need to.
Do we need to send a letter that says that, means.
Yeah.
Applied and there's no
follow-up at this time from township?
Yeah, well, basically I say that we stay the, stay the violation, notice of violation, you're like, or.
I'm sorry?
This, we're, we're staying the button, staying the notice of viol- of violation.
Does that have the right wording?
I think that's appropriate for you suspending any, whatever, yes, it's still sitting out there, but you're not gonna take any action on it.
This time.
But I think you probably wanna do that with a motion.
Yeah.
To, so that Ms., Ms. Close can.
Take the appropriate action.
Pass that on me. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the, this violation. Dated three, fifteen, twenty twenty-four. For John Legate, property owner at six, five, nine, oh, Diamond Road, at this time, we will monitor the situation, introduce if necessary.
Sure.
Any discussion of the motion?
What's the long-term solution here?
Can they change the zoning on the barn?
They, they could change it to an I two, so allowing like a parking curb.
Okay.
Can't imagine that would probably.
If he's gonna build his house, that doesn't work, right, I assume?
I don't think that really has anything to do with it.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And just to say, and I mean, reading that, it says, the violation is no personal use of an agriculture business. In an agriculture barn.
Yeah, exactly.
You're gonna open a big can of worms there in whole township.
Oh, yeah.
Because every barn in the township is a personal vehicle, personal stuff, and.
Yeah, you're right.
Any more discussion?
That in my.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I give you what you need.
Yeah, just letting you know, keep it on in. These guys sitting through that.
Sorry if I talked more than I should have.
You're not, you're good, you, you're good cuz you're, you're talking.
Lou, I don't wanna go down a rabbit, with the water oil separator. Take care of it.
Mark, you want us, give us your name and.
Please, give us your name and talk, here's an opinion.
Well, it's, it's Mark Keener, seventy-eight, six, Jamaica, not, not an opinion, but a question. If it was a spill, you mentioned he had a water oil separator there.
Yes, he does.
So that would take care of it.
And he, he did that just as a extra step and precaution, in case there was ever an issue.
A problem.
That it would catch, and if, if there is any ice, snow runoff, it, it all goes into a drain, all goes through that oil water separator. His business and his.
That's, yeah, I don't know what. That's, yeah, I don't know what the capacity of something like that is, but. I mean, unless you have a catastrophic. You know, he's bringing in six trucks with two thousand gallons a piece and they all leak at the same time and somebody goes to turn the valves on. And and also. Overlooking the fact that. Most of these farmers have five hundred to a thousand, five thousand gallons of diesel and tanks sitting on the gravel. At their other barn, so.
Alright.
And if you'll never him pulling in there and fueling up. Rolling farms.
Exactly.
Yeah. Combine all of his equipment. There's always a risk of some sort.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can check cover.
Can cover everything. I think he's. Doing his. Good job of trying to prevent anything.
Kudoki, any more visitor comments? Let's move on to the fiscal officers report.
Okay, good evening again, everyone. Let's start out with the minutes of the March eleventh meeting. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've also given you, as always, the financial reports. These are for March, of course. You have the the normal five reports, the fund status at the end of the month. The year-to-date cash summary by fund, the month, March cash summary by fund. The March receipts and the March payments. And there are really no unusual items that I. Noted that I should really share with you, but does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve the financial reports? And authorize the payment of bills in March?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March financial reports and authorize the payment of March bills warrants five oh seven five six. Five oh seven six oh and vouchers one seventy nine through two seventy six for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Um, I submitted to the. Montgomery County Auditor, the three resolutions that you approved at the March meeting. Concerning the proposed fire and EMS levy. That we possibly may run in November. I have received the responses. When I sent you my report, I had not yet reviewed them. I have now reviewed them. And I can share with you the information. And then I'm going to also send it to the group that's been meeting. Uh, through the city to discuss their recommendation of what they would like to suggest that you do, but. The first option that was pursued. Was a to um. Do it an additional four mil levy. And that would be a continuous period of time and that would generate one million one hundred eighty four thousand per year. The second option was to replace the. Two thousand and two slash two thousand and six levy. It's a two mil levy and replace that with a five mil levy for a continuous period of time. And that one would generate one million four hundred and eighty thousand per year. The third option, which is the option you added at the last meeting. Was to replace the two thousand two slash two thousand six levy. With a, and that again was a two mil levy, replace it with an identical two mil levy. And that levy would bring in five hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. Now, I also ask Gloria Butler at the auditor's office to tell me what the current levy will generate. She sent me an email um. That I received when I got back from vacation, saying that that levy generates three hundred and ninety two thousand per year. I'm not sure that she sent me the information on the right levy. And that amount is much closer to the amount we get from the two thousand ten levy than from the two thousand and twos. This afternoon, I sent her a response of an email back. Asking her to confirm that this number is indeed the two thousand two, two thousand six. I, of course, haven't heard from her yet, so. That's the numbers that we received and and I think the next step will be. Uh, when I send it to the committee. Dr. Cross is part of that. We will probably have a meeting sometime in the next month. And come back to you. Perhaps at the May meeting. To start the process. Again, we have until the early part of August to file that levy. So May, June, July, you've got three meetings left.
What was the total for the first option, the four mil?
Four mil is one million one eighty four. Want all?
No, I had the rest of them. I just didn't catch the.
First one.
And I will send these to you. Once I get the response from Gloria about what the current levy will generate. Does that number seem way too high?
Does that have the cost per hundred thousand dollars of value?
It is. So for the four mil, it would be a hundred and forty dollars. For the five mil, it would be a hundred and seventy five. Again, that would be a replacement, not additional. And the two mil replacement would be seventy.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay, I'll move on. Uh, both Dr. Cross and I were contacted by the Auditor of State's representative who will perform our. Two thousand twenty two and twenty three audit. Probably this summer. Uh, he asked both of us to respond to questions related to the risk of fraud at the township. I assume, Dr. Cross, you've already responded to the hearings. Thank you. Uh, he also asked me to confirm whether the township wanted a full audit. Or what's known as an agreed upon procedures review, which is a much less intensive review than a full audit. I did request, and that's known as an A U P. And I did request that A U P and the state has approved it. So we will be having an A U P at some point later this year. It will be performed at a much lower cost than the full audit. And this will be the third A U P that I've done since I started. And Mr. Keener being here, he remembers the days when every other audit had to be a full audit.
So do they not have to do that?
No, the state has backed off of that.
Do you do, as long as they approve it, you can do that going forward?
At some point, I guess they'll tell me we have to do a full audit, but not at this point. So. Save some money.
Absolutely. I never.
Yes. So I'll keep you informed as the audit gets scheduled. And eventually you'll see an audit report, which will post the link on the website, or maybe I think we even actually have the report on the website. From the last audit. Okay, um, moving on. Uh, my wife and I left on vacation a day later than we had planned. So as a result, I was able to attend the March twenty eighth Montgomery County Township Association meeting. Thank you, uh, Mr. Potter, for agreeing to do that. If I couldn't go, but actually you missed a very good meeting. There were a lot of things that were discussed. In that hour and a half that we were there or hour and forty five minutes. And I do want to spend a few minutes reviewing those with you. First of all, the Ohio Township Association's Director of Governmental Affairs, Kyle Brooks, attended in person. And I think that's always great when the OTA comes down and actually is physically present at the county meeting. A year or so, maybe less than a year ago. Um, the president or the director Heidi Flock came down to the meeting, which was also very nice. Anyway, Kyle Brooks discussed. Several items. The first one was the township webinar. Subscription. It's two hundred and fifty dollars and it allows all OTA members to watch or either online or later on. Uh, any webinar that the OTA does for the year plus anything they have in their files. Now, we have heard about this for quite a while, but we haven't ever decided whether we wanted to. Buy that subscription for the year. If for some reason every township in the county buys a subscription, the price goes down from two fifty to one seventy five. So. What, at this point, do you know what you'd like to do? Or do we just want to keep monitoring this and decide down the road?
I I we've talked about this before, the two hundred and fifty dollars really. I don't think we use the webinars enough to make that. Usually they're twenty five to thirty dollars a piece.
Right.
I've I have participated in over the years. And I think I'm the only one. And as far as the the OTA session conference. If you are a member of the OTA. Like three months and Sean. You can access those. You don't have to have a subscription.
You it is not actually covered by the subscription, the winter conference, but you can only if you attend a conference like I could not go and watch any of the.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, yeah.
Only you. Let's see, Jake, you didn't. You went, Mark didn't go. And you so only Jake and Shauna.
Well, I paid for the registration, but I didn't.
Oh, well, then you could.
I did. I just don't think it's worth the money. I don't think we would we would use it enough to uh. Spend the two hundred and fifty dollars. Kids can't see.
I wasn't sure whether Mr. Jacoby might. Be interested in doing, you know, watching those webinars. So I. That's why I brought it back up to you, so.
We won't, we won't do anything.
Okay. Uh, Kyle Brooks also discussed some of the state legislation that's going on right now. Starting out with H B House Bill three fifteen, which is the township omnibus bill. It is pending up at the legislature. It has nine provisions. I didn't list them all, but one of them would allow the townships to now post public notices online rather than purchasing newspaper ads. And, you know. We got two bills that I received today. For your two, plus there was another one with the day dealing news, you know, we spend a fair amount of money. Especially in the zoning area. Uh, with advertising. So that's possible that that we may get permission to do that if the bill passes as it's now written. Another one would allow townships to have special township license plates or township vehicles. That would actually our license plates could say German Township with our logo. I I don't view that as a big item, but maybe. With the place cars, maybe for the road equipment. I don't know, but. Anyway, that is something that is being considered. The third item would restore the indigent burial fund back to the two thousand nineteen levels. And I didn't even realize this, but the state funding was cut in last year's budget bill. So. And again, this is not a big one for us. I know in my years, we've never had it in indigent burial. I don't know how many, Mr. Keener, none. So that's goes back eight years at least. So again, not a big item for us. Perhaps it is, especially for the urban townships. Where they probably have a fair number of indigent people. And the fourth item would allocate funds for townships to use that money to update their comprehensive plans. And I'm not even sure we have a comprehensive plan for the towns. But if we want one. Um, Kyle Burke said that there are examples that are available from the OTA office that we can use, so.
That eventually may be something you want to talk to Kurt about, but you know.
It kind of toss it here.
It tosses. You don't have to have a comprehensive plan.
We piggybacked off Montgomery.
Well, that's good information to have if we ever want to move in that direction. And then he um. Talked about the. Senate committee that's investigating Ohio. Affordable housing crisis. And if you've been reading the OTA emails, you probably have already read about this. Um, but one of the proposals that this Senate committee is considering. Is to transfer responsibilities. Uh, zoning responsibilities from the township level to the county level. The OTA is fighting this because they consider this obviously an attack on local control. And I have sent you. Um, the talking point memo that he handed out that day. Um, in fact, we could have had that conversation with Mr. Creach. To, but I have a feeling, given his background, he's not going to be in support of that anyway. The second presentation was by a company Secure Cyber Defense. And their president, Joe Tenny, and he spent some time walking us through the process they followed. Um, at in Huber Heights. With their November cyber attack. And I'm sure you read lots about it in the paper at that time, but hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent. It was an interesting session. I ask him to share his slides. I've not yet seen them, but if I do. Get receive them, I will send them on because you might enjoy seeing the process on trying to recover. Under a cyber attack. Uh, State Representative Andrea White was there. Uh, she represents the eastern part of Montgomery County. And she and Harrison trustee George, George Anne Godsey. Discuss the proliferation of youth group homes in Montgomery County. Our county has seventy four group homes, the most of any county in the state. The children come from all over the state to Montgomery County. It was pointed out that one third of Thurgood Marshall High School students live in group homes. And Representative White stated that the crisis is due to the shortage of foster homes. But no one can seem to understand why Montgomery County is bearing the brunt. Of so many of these group homes. And I guess in particularly in townships like Harrison. It's really become a problem. Again, in our township, I don't think it, I'm not sure that we have a group home. Not aware of one. Uh, we've talked before about whether we wanted to host an M C T A meeting. Uh, you seemed interested, so I went ahead and signed us up for June twenty seventh. Uh, the August meeting on August twenty second, it's now going to be held at Jefferson Township. And then the last meeting of the year, which is the holiday gala, it's going to be November twenty one at the Mandalay. Now, we can do anything we want for that meeting. I know, Mr. Stubbs, you and we're hoping it could be an evening meeting. We can do that. Uh, we can provide food if we want to, or we don't have to. This is really for us to craft whatever we want. But if you're still interested in having that meeting on that date. Um, let's talk about what you might want to do. I was thinking maybe we start that meeting six thirty and or seven at the evening. Maybe a half hour of social time ahead of time where people can kind of mingle if they want to come that early. And if you wanted to, we could serve them some hot dogs and hamburgers that were grilled. And if that sounded interesting, I would go to my Lions Club. Or we could go anywhere else and ask someone to prepare that for us. But I have a feeling my Lions Club would agree. Glenn Bowman loves grilling.
I think, uh, if you could get the Lions involved, that would be awesome. Um, to get them out here and then they could stick around for the meeting, I assume, too, right? They wanted to.
It's a public meeting, so.
Yeah, I think I think that sounds good and. I I like that we're going to host one and if if the Lions are interested in. Working it. That would be, I think that would be a great idea. Because I don't think that's something that's been done before. You're reaching out to the community. And you're having community involvement. I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. Okay, I'll move forward with that and I'll let you know. What they what they say when I when I talk to them. Really, I'll talk to Glenn. Start there. Start there. Okay, I think that's everything I have, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Police Department report.
I'm kind of losing my voice, so. Um. Here with. Monthly stats from last month. Officers drove five thousand four hundred seventy five miles. Total dispatches were ninety one. We closed eighty nine cases. Nine case follow ups. And there was one arrest made last month. Um, there were four hundred and thirteen business checks. Sixty seven vacant house checks and. It's also known as vacation house checks. And um, nine hundred and forty six occupied house checks. There were six crashes. There were six crashes, thirty-nine traffic stops, or sixteen citations issued. Monthly info. Two twenty-six, twenty twenty-four through three, one twenty twenty-four. German Township Police Department partnered with the Valleyview High School for a Drive Safe Week focused on speed, seat belts, and overall driver safety. Several several successful contacts made with students and travelers in that area during school safety zone times, which according to the SRO, the school safety zone times, which they have lights out there now that flash. Those are set up to flash between seven, ten AM and eight AM morning and two fifteen to three PM in the afternoon. So that worked out well. We'll look at doing that maybe a couple more times or a couple times a year during the school year in the future. I wasn't here last for the last meeting because I was at a state mandated chief's training in Columbus. That went really well. A lot of good information that if you guys are interested, I can pass along to you guys as well. Was very important. I really, I was kind of dreading it before I went, but it really turned out to be a good, good training. You have to do that within the first six months when you become a chief. So they they just started that maybe in the last couple of years. So it's relatively new. But it was, it was a good training. As a reminder, German Township Shred Day and medication drop-off is Saturday, May fourth, from nine AM to eleven AM here at the Township Building. So we'll have all of our officers out here and and folks that wish to participate helping with that. The next two items are kind of general housekeeping of policies. Both were brought forward by one of our officers. The first is there's a difference between the Township Personnel Manual, four point O, which is work schedules, section four point two dash two C, which is sick leave, varication, proved use versus the Police Department's General Order, twenty-six point one, Department Rules for Basically Calling Off Sick. I attached the Personnel Manual that's maintained by the trustees. And I also attached hours. They basically say the same thing. The only difference is the Personnel Manual defines having a one-hour call-off for the shift of zero eight hundred to sixteen hundred, so eight in the morning, four o'clock. We call that our day shift. All other shifts require a two-hour call-off prior to calling off. You have to do it two hours before. We can do nothing to the policy and we'll update ours to match what you guys have. Or we can possibly specify a timeframe of when a day shift starts between four AM and nine AM and say, okay, that's when you have an hour to call off before your shift. Or possibly just do an hour across the board. This this one was brought forward as a possibility of a grievance because we told an officer that he need to give us two hours because he started at seven AM, which is outside of the eight AM sixteen hundred. It's basically gives us time to find somebody to replace that officer, get them here before the shift starts. But in looking at it, I don't have a problem with it being an hour. I talked to Jeremy. Jeremy doesn't have a problem either way what we do with it. So it's kind of up to you guys. I just need your direction on how you would like me to handle.
I mean, going with a uniform, one-hour notice, I think it's.
Okay. So then we will update our policy, but the Personnel Manual will have to be updated as well.
Does that give you enough time in those other shifts to find a replacement?
An hour is pushing, but generally, yes.
Okay.
How how does that work anyways? You got people on call. You don't have so so there's nobody on call. If somebody calls off, you don't know, like, takes a turn for a week that you're on call.
We just start calling the officers that are available that don't work the next shift aren't on the schedule that would interrupt our schedule.
Does this happen very often?
No. Generally, generally not. We are blessed with officers that come to work and do their job.
I was just wondering if maybe such short time, if you had somebody that was on an on-call week.
Yeah, it's with our twelve-hour shifts, it's gotten complicated.
So the difference between the Township Personnel Manual and your departmental manuals is the hours? You define. Then talk about a one-hour day shift and two-hour otherwise. But the township specifically says oh, eight hundred to sixteen.
Right, yours defines oh, eight hundred to sixteen.
Is that the problem?
The problem was is the start time, seven o'clock for this particular officer. So basically, we said, you have to give us two hours because that's not defined eight AM to sixteen hundred hour day shift. What's different, ours just says day shift, yours gives a defined time.
Which is better, define time or just calling it?
Well, definitely define time.
So we need to change if we have two hours, you would need to change.
We would have to define hours. Yours could stay the same.
But you would want it to be oh, seven hundred instead of?
I would probably give a day shift. And and the reason I think for this is usually if you're sleeping, you wake up sick. I I don't wake up until an hour before I have to come to work. And it gives them that. If we say, hey, it's two hours, then they're gonna, policy's gonna be broken. So I I kind of agree with just an hour across the board. And if worse comes to worse, myself or the sergeant will come in, make sure the shift is gone.
Right, is is the person that's on, that's working allowed to stay over if if need be a half hour?
Yes, yeah, we'll hold somebody over.
Somebody's allowed there, and that is allowed to do that.
And we've done that. You don't like it.
Right, I understand. I'm just saying they're they are allowed to do that.
Our number one goal is to make sure that the township's come. Whatever we have. But I I'm I'm fine with the hour. If you guys think that that's the way.
I agree. Uniformed.
Now, I don't think that trustees probably approved any changes to your policeman. But they will need to approve any change.
Right, I don't have access to your guys, so I wouldn't. Some whoever has access to your original documents.
Well, between Ms. Close and I, we have digital versions. I'm not sure either one of them are the same as for the actual printed copy. What we need to do is come up with some language that you highlighted here, what you want, what we wanted to say. And then the trustees can do a resolution. And I would say, can it wait a month? And we we agree on the language and then bring it back to them?
That's fine.
So why don't we come up with language that works for you, works? And then we'll bring it back to next month's meetings.
I can work on that tomorrow and then there's going to be a tea guys.
But you're comfortable, all three of you, with one hour across the board? That should make it fairly easy to write up.
Yeah.
Be comfortable with it, don't it?
The second is the use of tobacco products. Basically, what it boils down to is what is your stance on alternative tobacco products? Which, when this was written, probably vapes weren't a thing and the nicotine pouches weren't a thing. Do we need to define that in the Personnel Manual? Say that those are also not used in the same way that tobacco products aren't used?
I think that vaping should be treated the same as other tobacco products.
Sure.
The nicotine pouches, they need to dissolve or whatever they.
No, it's an alternative to chewing tobacco. Yeah. Yeah, they're little pouches.
Are they snooze or what is it?
It's like snus, they're little pouches that have nicotine in them.
Just keep it in a pouch instead of being loose. So it does, but it's like chewing tobacco.
And it's an alternative to not using.
Still spinning them both.
No, actually, you swallow. Because that's what I'm using those to try to get off the, but I'm not using them here. But yeah.
I think vaping should be same as other tobacco products as far as the nicotine, which is you've got officers that chew tobacco.
Yeah, well, we've, we got lax in that over the last few something that we're working on. But that's I, that's why this was brought up, is to make sure there's a clear no vaping, no tobacco alternatives.
We recently received information from the state clarifying the no smoking indoors rule to include vaping. In fact, on this door and the other two and three doors, we now have a new sticker, which is the white rectangle that you're seeing. It says that, because right above it, it says no tobacco. So that specifically says no vaping. But that's just in in the building, from the state law. You're going farther, I think. You're saying on the premises and the vehicles.
That's, yeah, that's the way it's defined with tobacco, and I think it'd be easier to explain it finer.
Well, if they're defining it as that, president.
So the policy, the ninety point five, five point one four, that would, we would have, we would need to add, basically just add vape and alternative tobacco products would not be used on the premises or it.
So that would include the pouches and the the chewing tobacco, too?
That would, well, chewing tobacco, that's tobacco. So that's always been, it's supposed to have been upheld. But we are doing that now. But we we just wanted to find the vape and the the alternative tobacco product. The alternative tobacco products is the little pouches is to help people stop. It's like the chewing gum or cigarettes that people use, the Nicorette or anything. It's kind of the same thing.
So does that count then as a tobacco product?
It's not tobacco. It's a nicotine, it's a alternative.
Like a patch.
Yeah, you just put it.
Right, I'm just saying it.
You could have a patch, you could have. All right. If you're trying to quit, I don't see why that would.
Yeah, we want to help, we want to help with.
Yeah.
So we just, again, vaping's not allowed, but alternative products are.
Right, and that's in, yeah, and and we would basically tell the officer, use your common sense. You don't do it in front of the public, you don't do it in front of people. But it is something to help people stopping. So we just say that the the vapes, we would add the vapes. So then we'll take care of that, too. And then how how do we get your guys' approval on that? Would we pipe it up, bring it to the next meeting?
Is this five point one four part of the township?
Yes, that's also a township.
So we can do both of those as a resolution, making these amendments to the Personnel Manual. So yeah, we'll come up with language and what what we're replacing, what we're changing. We'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
But it sounds like you want vaping to be known, but the alternatives you're all comfortable with. You and I can work through it together.
Good, Chief.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Subdivision Department.
Zoning is starting to get busy again. There was four permits in March, which I know doesn't sound like much, but on top of everything else going on, it was enough. New construction on Putin Bag Road, a fence on Route four, a project on Oxford, and a fence on Dry Run Circle. Smirnere Ready Mix Mineral Expansion Project was denied by the BZA at a public hearing on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The BZA is meeting tomorrow for a conditional use lot split on Jamaica Road, seven PM in the trustee meeting room. It's just the resident who has some property, they have a house on it, it's a rental property. They're just sick of being renters or rent, sick of dealing with renters. And they just want to split off that house and a couple acres just to be done and sell it off and keep the rest of the land for farm use. And the zoning commission's public hearing for small solar regulations is this Thursday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM in the trustee meeting room. That's all I got for zoning, but I have a couple other things. I gave you guys two different proposals for a new digital sign. I had started looking into this a long time ago. Unfortunately, it took one of the gentlemen a while to get his proposal to me. And by the time he did, the ARPA funds that I was going to suggest we use for it had been used. So I just figured I'd throw it at you since I did the legwork on it anyway. They're pretty similar. And actually, it's two gentlemen, which I did not realize when I looked into both of them. The Will Fab is David Wilson. He did the sign down at Trustee Insurance. They said they were, they were very happy with the work that he did down there. And then the Wilson, he's the one that did Harvest Church. These two gentlemen apparently used to work together, had a conflict of interest or something happened. They now have separate companies, but they still work out of the same building. I did not realize that when I had asked both of them for proposals. But those were the two when I reached out to other people in the community who had signs. Those were the two that were very highly recommended. And I I think if I remember right, the proposals are pretty, pretty spot on, within a couple hundred bucks of each other. So it's something, if you guys want to consider it later on, I know, like I said, I know the ARPA funds are not there for this now. But I did the legwork, so I wanted to kind of throw it at you anyway.
Well, just some asking the pilots.
Yeah, yeah.
We have some ARPA money, but.
Yes.
Well.
Depending on what happens.
That brings me to my second thing.
I know.
Depending what happens with the sixty thousand through the House and Senate, you may even have more.
Yeah, because if you if you look at that one, it's, I have the other day putting those pinwheels out for child abuse prevention. And it's it's looking pretty rough, and Jeremy can attest to that because it's it's cracked and it's in rough shape, so.
Are those deeply programmable signs?
Yes, like the ones on Trustee Insurance.
Leave the program change.
Which will, let me tell you, I I just made a note to myself to put out the sign for Shred Day, which means I gotta ask Jeremy Scott to lug it out there. I gotta go through them stupid letters, and if I don't have enough of the one letter, I gotta figure something out and reword. It's it's a pain in the rear. So just to be able to program something or say, you know, our basketball team is doing great, goes to championship, you know, we can put a little message on there or.
Yeah, I think it'd be very beneficial for the township.
I I think so. I, yeah, absolutely.
My daughter-in-law is the church secretary at our church, German Town Methodist, and she's responsible for updating the sign. It's so easy to do. Ours is a Wilson sign, so, but it's so easy to do.
Yeah, and I just think it gives us more versatility, too. Like I said, if we want to send a message to the community about something or, you know. Yeah, and I just think it gives us more versatility too. Like I said, if we want to send a message to the community about something or, you know, go, you know. Valley View Football or whatever, you know, kind of gets we're able to reach more people with things like that when they drive by. Little messages here and there, whatever pertains to our events, our trustee meetings, you know, like that. So. There's that. Um my second order business is I I provided you guys and I apologize I didn't get to send these out sooner. Um I could be on vacation for a week, I could just play catch-up all day. Um to paint proposals for local buildings. Um one is considerably higher than the other. That being said. The first one is the the total was twenty one hundred. And then, but he, that guy is just wanting to just chalk the gaps. We have some cracks in the in the back. Um it's getting in pretty rough shape. He just wanted to throw some chalk in there, throw some paint on it. Second one that came out. They keep me at the comment that a lot of times when they do quotes. That he comes out higher, but that's because he wants to do it right and he wants to, he talked about grinding and tucking. Um two hundred and twenty linear feet of damaged mortar joints. Uh it sounded like. And I know he has done some other work that he was very highly recommended. But it sounded like he was going to go more in depth and fix it kind of the right way. Halfway fixing it and throwing some paint on it. So I want to kind of give you guys something to look at. Looking at, I had him, I didn't know. What we were looking at as far as funds for this as well. I know there's a little bit of ARPA money left. Um so I had them give me quotes for the police department side as well as the township side in case we need to try to break it up or. You know, if there's enough ARPA money where we can use it to do a whole building, that's why there's multiple numbers on here.
Well, this, just so I know, the the twenty one hundred dollars from.
That is for.
Is for the whole.
No, I I think, or no, you're right, it is. That's for the whole building.
Whole the whole back where. Where these guys are are. You're going in half and half. With the with.
Yeah, because if you look down at the bottom of the one that's that's an email, uh the police department side came out to eleven hundred versus the township side was a thousand. That equals that twenty one hundred.
Alright, yes.
Whereas the other one was twenty five hundred dollars for each side.
Or he kind of gives us some idea.
Yeah, so like I said, I apologize I didn't get it sooner to be able to look at. It's just. Crazy couple weeks, so. There's that, something to think about. Building is definitely getting a little little rough looking.
Randy King did the cemetery building, didn't they?
That's correct, yes.
My family's actually used Mike White on two different buildings, so.
I've used both of them guys.
Yeah, we don't need to make a decision on that tonight at all.
I want to take a look at stuff in the back.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Jeremy gave you his road to per.
Yes, he did.
Go ahead and do that.
Uh of course Jeremy's not here, he he flips in the day. But he uh he has very little, all he's want is to ask for the board approval, the solicit bids for the twenty twenty four chip seal contract. Uh planning on sealing uh Butter Street Harris. And a portion of Fran estimated not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um he just needs, there'll be no money right now. It's just a a motion to get bids.
Go ahead and make most of them.
I to ask the board for a motion. Um to get uh bids for the twenty twenty four chip ceiling, um not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I would recommend not putting the dollar limit in there. Just to go, just go and get bids for what he wanting to see done. So if you're comfortable with that, let's remove that.
We can remove the hundred and ten.
Are you comfortable with that too? Okay.
We'll remove the hundred and ten thousand dollars just to get bids.
Just to get bids.
For twenty twenty four of the of the road he requested.
And he'll he'll take it from there.
He'll take it from there.
Yeah.
And that's all that he had.
Any discussion of the motion?
All in favor?
Any opposed? Thank you.
We'll be on the trustee reports, Mr. Hunter.
Alrighty, I got a lot. So the the park meeting I I missed because I was out of town on. According to the minutes, uh the new roof for the depot will be uh replaced and it will be starting soon. And it'll be done under the insurance. So the only money they're out on that is a thousand dollar um deductible. Planning for the Fourth of July parade, which is on a Thursday this year. Um the grand marshal. Uh will be the foxes or the horn shells to be decided at the main meeting. Still discussing the defibrillators. If you did not know, the M M I flag was stolen. Uh it was recovered a few days later, found on the bike trail by a resident. We got that back. So. Um as far as parks go, I sent out the email for the bills for the overcharge overages on of eleven thousand dollars. That Ron Wine sent of the actual bills for his subcontractors and materials. Out of pocket expenses totaled up seventy one thousand dollars and some change. He was hoping to get the money. Increase the the price to recoup that money. He or his company would not be making any money on the job himself. Um I wanted to discuss that a little bit. So he makes, he tries to make ten percent. For him and his company as a consulting fees and supervising it. Um he would not be making any of that money. It's just uh actual. Artic第五s that that was that he has. I sent you the bills. I feel that we pressured him to do a cheaper job and it's possible in order to get the job approved. He lost a couple of days of work due to lack of information concerning private property along the creek. I was not aware of the private property, but the city was. And then it would just, it would be an additional fifty five hundred dollars for the township and the same for the city. I think that the the overage should be paid, but of course he will not be making any money of that. I'll not be making any profit. So there's a discussion about that.
So what what did the contract actually say? It say up to sixty thousand dollars?
It did. It did not include any. It would just include the sixty thousand dollars. And his, what the, so he, what he does is he has uh subcontractors. That does the work and he supervises. So it it he sent a list of what subcontractors billed him. And like I said, he had two or three days of lost time. That wasn't his fault, more our fault than anything, I think. And the city's fault, absolutely the city's fault.
So I, but as far as splitting that with the city, the city doesn't want to pay anything.
That that's what I've been heard from Judy, yes, but that's that's them.
Did they mention that at council last week? Were you there?
That was an email that received.
I know. Yeah, I thought maybe perhaps Judy might mention it at council, because they would have to probably approve it. They approved the first disbursement. At least that's my memory, didn't. They did that at open meeting by council, not by Judy.
Yes, but I think you're correct.
Now she may have the authority to do the overage.
Yes.
Within her spending limit.
Um if you want to table this to see if we get the money from our our um grant. If that, maybe that might make it a little easier instead of making a decision tonight.
We may not have that answer till summer. Now he could wait.
He also ran over, he he came up with the bid. He gave us.
He did, he did, he did come up with.
And he ran over.
Yes, he did.
That's on, that's kind of on him.
Yes, he he did.
Significantly more, I I don't want to go into that rabbit hole again, but it was uh. Quite a bit of money to fix that.
It was, but it was a lot cheaper than what the ninety three thousand dollars from the previous one was. So that's what's the previous bid from the previous person. So I I I understand everything, I understand, but he's not hiding anything. He sent all the bills. Um it was just uh overage that he. And again, he's not. He won't be making any money. I just hate to see a small business take eleven thousand dollars out of their pocket. Eventually, we hope to use him again.
I'm not sure I do.
Well, you can spend ninety three thousand on the next one.
I'm not sure I want to do that either.
Yeah, I say if you're comfortable with tabling it basically, until we see if we get angry.
I I have no problem. I would like to see it paid, but I I understand and I thank you well too.
Well, you have previously approved spending the ARPA money to do this. And we've now finally received an invoice from him. So I think we should go ahead and pay the thirty.
Absolutely.
To him.
Absolutely, yeah.
And let the city pay the, they already paid the ten, so let them pay the other twenty.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, this has nothing to do with that.
And I told the city that I'm paying him, not them. So that there's no question that we paid a contractor. If I should give the money to the city, there's a sub grant issue and that involves even more paperwork for ARPA. So. There's no, if no one complains, if none of you are up complaining about it, I'm gonna go ahead and pay the thirty thousand.
Yes, yeah, that's true. Contracted to do, yes.
So you all agree? Okay, I'll pay the thirty.
I have one more. Um I sent, I forward you uh an email and a proposal for the erosion project. From same Ron Wine Channel Maintenance for the uh Little Twin project. It was a total of seventy eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Um I got with Jeremy and. Uh Jake was involved and got the, Jeremy wrote the grant up for the proposal for the second half of the capital budget money. And was submitted on that. I submitted that on April the third. It's done in two phases. Uh thirty thousand dollars could be spent. Which in my, was what I was thinking was if we got the grant for the. First part of the capital money, it's possibly using that thirty thousand dollars on Little Twin. And that will fix the problem, but it will stop the problem from getting worse for now. And then with the hope of getting the grant money for the whole amount. So all I'm do, all I'm doing right now is informing you that uh. The money that the proposal was submitted for for the grant money.
So. It's a lot of money, but uh. The timeframe, what is, how how long can we wait before this project is started, is it?
We're not allowed to start anything until um May or till fall, till November. He told me that when I talked to him on the phone the other day that he talked, he is very concerned about the trees. Uprooting there and it could possibly, uh if it does that, it'll it'll take the road out at that point. The road will probably have to be shut down. He talked to four of engineers or whoever he deals with that the permitting permitting. You know, they would have to be a bat study. And they they give him permission to do his own bat study. So that we can go in there and at least cut those trees that's along the road and get the weight off of them. So they don't want to uproot. During the summer month, as long as there's no bats there.
Yeah, is it township property though? I think we're running into a play which is not on.
No, it's all township, it would be township property. Uh we had a kind of meeting with Wally Styrer. But he was there and he gave us. He owns all of that property there on the other side and up to there's a a right away there where the electric comes in. He owns all the way up to that point. So he owns all that property there. And it would be pushing it over onto his, where it used to be, very obvious where it was. It's in a curve. And all it's going to do is start working its way back. It's never going to go over into his. Because it's in a curve there. Yeah, he was there.
So what would be the ideal game plan for this project?
Well, ideal is to get the grant. That would be the, that would be the ideal game plan. The the the, again, the thirty thousand dollars, what I'm talking about is the thirty thousand dollars that we had already approved for Kurtcher Park. So if we get the grant for that money, use that thirty thousand dollars over to Little Twin to to. Keeps the problem from getting any worse. Hopefully, didn't getting the grant to finish this correctly. It all's going to come down on this if if we get the grant money from the. From the senate, senate money. For now. There's been concrete dumped over there. Didn't, did you guys ever go out and take a look at it?
I've driven out there.
We got, yeah, we got stopped. Look over the bank.
But again, I think it comes back, why is the Army Corps just not taking care of the waterway again?
Because they're not going to. Right, they should, but you can't make them. I I they should do that, but they're not going to. You heard what the, what Jeremy said, that they told him, that it takes the road, put a call sack over there, a call sack over here. That's their solution, dude. I don't know that it'd be cheaper or not. Take a lot of money for the call sack, yeah.
Well, let's wait and see what happens.
We just need to wait and see what happens. But that's that's. It's just keeping you informed. A lot, all this problem is because. They've never had any maintenance on this creek ever. And that, and so the city. Has their own problem. They're just north of Astoria Road. They're coming into the. Like trail. So the creek that comes out of Mudlick. It's, that's what started it. It's coming across Twin Creek and into the bank. And it's about ten or fifteen feet at the most from the bike trail right now. So I think theirs, I think theirs was, you give them a proposal of thirty five thousand, I think it was. That has nothing to do with us.
What, or hail Dennis, one three zero nine one Oxford. I just want to say a statement is, I think it's a lot of money to spend with taxpayers. And my personal opinion is very reminiscent of the Water District.
Very reminiscent to which?
Water District.
I'm sorry, Miss Dennis, I didn't actually hear what you said.
I said I feel that this does not need to be done. It's a lot of money for the taxpayers. We'll be giving and it's very reminiscent of the Water and River District.
Thank you.
But he's found another problem along the creek. Well, for Germantown now. I feel like if you wanted to, you could you could redirect the whole creek if you wanted to.
It's already been redirected. We're trying to go back to where it was. We're in the way of the nature. It's it's going to move wherever it wants to. We want to keep it where it's supposed to. In order to keep it where it was, it needs to be maintained. So it's going to move on its own.
Right, that's just.
So we're trying to keep it from moving. We wanted to put it back where it used to be. This point just continued to move.
But you can't fight nature.
Winds, well.
You can, you can make it, the river walk like in San Antonio, but we don't have the, I mean, we're not doing that. we don't have the I mean, we're not doing that. We can't do that.
We're not asking to do that. We're just trying to maintain it to go straight. Reason, again, it's just because it has never been maintained. That's the problem. You know, if they would have if they would have cut a tree out of the way fifteen years ago, none of this would be going on. All it would have took is somebody to cut the tree out of the way and move it, and none of this would have happened. It's got to be maintained. It's no not this doesn't get maintained and then it becomes this. So that that down there at Little Twin, on the Wally's side, a tree fell over, pushed the water over to the bank. Somebody would have went down there and cut the tree out, moved it back out of the way. The creek would have stayed where it was at. This would never be going on. It's got to have maintenance. It stuck fifteen years or twenty, but here we are. I'm sure there's another tree somewhere that's either fell or getting ready to fall. It's going to cause a problem fifteen years from now if we don't maintain it.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just I just.
I don't. I don't know what to say. You're not going to get nobody else to do it. Until it becomes our problem with our road or our bike trail or whatever. And then they're still not going to help you. It's still going to cost the township the money. So I'm just trying to make costs as little as possible. Next year, it'll be a lot more money. Or the road will go down and it'll be catastrophic. There's just be road close signs. They have no money. What I can do is. Where's in it?
So the I mean, worst case scenario, it needs to be done like very quickly. Does it general general fund? Handle that until hopefully get the grant money back?
You can use general fund anytime you want. You may want to. Since you can't start this until the fall anyway, you may want to sleep on it for a couple of months. Uh, have Jeremy weigh in at a future meeting, maybe even have Ron Wine come back and talk more. Maybe even a field trip out there.
Everybody should go and look at it.
We can call that a special meeting and do a field trip.
I can have Wally come. He's he he's there. He knows it needs something has to be done. And he's willing. He's given us access on his property, whatever he needs. The biggest so this is approximately twenty five or thirty feet from road level to the creek to the water. So all this work is going to have to be done from below. That's a why a lot of more expense than than Kercher Park. It was all done from the bank.
Mr. Stubbs, you asked the question earlier, is this on township property? And I'm not sure whether that would be the right question or whether it's in our right right of way.
Right, yeah.
It may not be our property, but it's probably in our right of way. But that's a question Mr. Holbert could probably answer better than any of us.
Well, if it's not on our property, it'll be on Wally's driver's property.
Right.
He owns that.
Okey doke. Will that be the plan? Wait.
Or we can take a field trip.
Well, we can do that anytime.
Everybody needs to do a field trip.
Yeah.
And and if you're going to do something like that, the best thing is to do with everybody involved. And we'll call it a meeting and we'll give notice to the media and to the public who want to receive notice. They don't have to show up or they can, because it's a public meeting at that point. Mrs. Cross.
Deb Cross seven four 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 South Diver. So the first um first estimate that we got was for permits and all of that, right? So the second estimate from your guy was without permits. He only does two hundred feet at times, so he doesn't have to do the permits, right?
It's all under a permit.
But only two hundred feet at times.
Exactly four hun- it's actually four hundred.
So he doesn't have to do the other guy's permits because that was why that other one was so so much more expensive, was my understanding.
I think it was the way they was doing the work made it much more.
So my question is, if is there another company that does this work that we could get another estimate? So it could be apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. Because they were pulling permits over on this one and then your guy doesn't. So I think that going to cost less. So is there this other third guy out here that does that kind of work that would be more apples to apples so that we could know that what we're paying for?
We 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 can look. All all I can tell you is from what Chip at the city, because they have been looking at the Kercher Park problem for years.
They finally got us to help them pay for it. So is there another guy?
So the the what they they have been trying to find somebody. The only one that they had found was the River.
River Rangers.
River Rangers was the only one that they could find to give them a a bid according to Chip, which was the ninety three thousand dollars. And it was a different way of doing it. They did it a different way. I don't know what the way was, but.
I think it would be. I mean, I know this is grant money possibly or it's ARPA money possibly, but in reasonably thinking, this is money that we could spend possibly somewhere else. So if there is an a way that we could get estimates that are apples to apples, I think it would make everybody feel a little bit more.
I agree a hundred percent. We just have to find somebody that does this kind of work. And according to the city, they have not been able to find it. Now, we're also going to, according to Ron Wine, he's got two other ways of of grant money that H two Ohio money. And then another that he's also helping us with trying to get that does only a river grant and creek water grants, that this will fall under. So that money would not be used anywhere else. We could not use that money for anywhere else. So we are going to apply for them also. They do not come out till June or July, I think you said. But we're we're not just.
So I mean, and to be fair, this has been going on for years and years and years and years. So this doesn't have to be done today or next month or the month after that. But we have some time.
We have some time. Yes, that's what I said.
So since we have some time, could we possibly, could you, the elected official, maybe search for somebody else?
I can. I can. Absolutely, but I'm I'm not.
Yeah, I'll search too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Ron is in this business. Um, and and like I said, Chip told me himself, it's just the engineer in Germantown who's been trying to get somebody to do this for years, not been able to find anybody except the River Rangers. Give them a price. So I will. We will share. We'll certainly look.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be well worth the time to do that. And if it it does worry me a little bit that there aren't other people out there doing it. So let's hope there are others that can come give us another estimate.
Yes, please. Well, I'm all about that.
All right, let's wrap that up.
Yes.
That's just.
I'm done.
I'll run through mine pretty quick. First, the cemetery levy passed since our last meeting. So, yeah, thank you, Abigail and Deb for helping us with the with the levy. I think forty seven votes is pretty close or forty six, whatever it was. Um, but but the impact that we can make in the next five years with the funding is going to be um. I I hopefully we can prove to everybody that voted know the good that we can do with the money. Um, so appreciate you guys' effort along the way and.
I do have something to say.
Yeah, absolutely.
To be honest, Keith was great.
Keith is fantastic.
The whole cemetery people, they were all wonderful and it was it was just really nice to work with them.
Yep, Bob's fantastic.
Yes, they all.
Everybody down there, they do a great job. So um and I love having Keith in here new and with new ideas and new ways of looking at things more efficient. We're we're getting things streamlined and we're getting faster and better. And and um one of the things we've done in the last year is we have a company coming in and pouring the foundations for us, which it costs pretty much the same as what it costs us to do it, but we can do it. We don't have to. We would have to wait. We had so many to make it worth a day or two or whatever to get the forms made. These guys will come in every time we have three or four. So we're able to keep up. Instead of doing pours twice a year, we can do pours as necessary, basically. So we've come up with ways to be more efficient by using pretty much the same money um and and keeping people happy and doing things the right way. So Keith's got new ideas. It's great. And then Bob's got I won't say how many years of wisdom, but he's this is his second second stint at the cemetery helping us out and uh just does a fantastic job uh with the bookwork and the accounting side of it. So just a team effort by everybody that does a great job down there. So.
We also have one other person, Jim, for that help.
Okay, well, please pass on our appreciation.
Thank you for your time. She's new here to the area and she knows how much the cemetery means to us.
Yes. So, uh, yeah, I it's definitely appreciative. We're gonna be able to update some things, equipment, and and I've got a quote to talk about on on the wall out front as well. So definitely thank you guys and please pass on our appreciation to the rest of the people that helped. So um the cemetery meeting is typically today, but uh John and Bonnie both had lips day events. So and we were a little closer at that five to to that. So we had we had to push our meeting till next Monday. So if anybody wants to attend next Monday, five o'clock in the cemetery. Uh, another proposal has been sent to Senator Antani's office. This time, uh, we had John Longworth come out and give us a quote. Uh, Longworth Property Maintenance, I believe his company is called, to repair the wall in front of the cemetery. Uh, we've talked about this a little bit in the past. It ended up, he gave us a two different quotes. They were pretty much equal on price, fifty thousand each way. A poured wall or a uh giant concrete block wall that has a decorative side to it. And he actually recommended that the decorative block, he thought would do a better job and look better along the on along the um along the road there. So we have the proposal from him. We have forwarded that on to Senator Antani. I did not receive a response this time that I want to say.
I did not receive a response to it.
So um maybe we should send it to uh our future representative who shows interest in this, which was Mr. Creech, who was here earlier tonight. We'll see if there's anything he can do. Um, our busy mowing season is about to start at the cemetery. Uh, so April first was the deadline. Just a reminder that decorations need to be on the monument or on the stone or on a shepherd's hook next to the uh monument so they can get through and mow more efficiently and weed eat as well. Um, so just keep that in mind. And then uh we're in the process of applying for Star Ohio. And we've also been contacted about our audit. We've requested a full audit this year um due to uh the the fiscal officer, the previous fiscal officer, just some no money's missing, but just some accounting errors that were made along the way. So uh we we've requested a full audit, so that should begin this summer. We're trying to coordinate with them if they're ever here, that they can just be at both places at the same time.
Uh, my auditor has asked it. We can do it remotely.
Okay.
And I told him I would consider it as long as it didn't involve a whole lot of scanning of documents.
Okay.
So but if it may be such that we do it in-house. We can do both of them here if that happens.
Yeah.
We can go back and forth.
Okay, if that works out, I know Bob's talked to him. So uh if it works out that they can both be here at the same time, that would be, I think that'd be beneficial to them and us and you and everybody. So.
Shouldn't lower cost.
It should, absolutely.
But an in-house in-person audit is going to probably be more expensive.
Oh, it's gonna be.
Than a remote audit.
Yeah.
Just because travel time and other wasted hours.
Right. Right. Okay, that concludes my cemetery portion. I've we talked about the tobacco policy shred days. I haven't even covered. Appreciate Rodney Creech for coming tonight. Um, next month, uh, the meeting, which I believe is May thirteenth, I uh have invited Fred Glander uh to attend, and I would like to recognize him for his lifetime of service to the township. Uh, a plaque is being made in Middletown. Um, and he was appreciative and I think it would, I think it's a good thing to do. So if anybody has stories or anything about Mr. Glander they'd like to share with us before the next meeting or at the next meeting, please feel free to do so. Uh, he's been on our zoning board for a long time. He is greatly appreciated in our community and.
He was our grand marshal last year.
Yes. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Stubbs, do you want some kind of a proclamation from the trustees?
Yeah.
And if you want to write that up or?
Yep, a resolution.
You could do that next month while he's physically present.
Yep.
You all could sign it, just have put an little frame maybe along with it.
Absolutely.
You're giving it.
It's an acrylic plaque and I can show you the design that they sent me. Since you uh. Uh, let's see. Person. Uh, it's gonna be on that plaque. And that's what they worked up. I've just got to send a better version of our logo in.
Okey doke. So my report, I really have talked about most of it already. I attended the Germantown Council meeting on four one. Highlights, Dan and Connor from the Miami Conservancy District was there and he spoke about repairs of the upstream concrete on the Germantown DM. I suppose it was started in twelve twenty. He did mention it as far as big water events during the year going at a frequency, which maybe give us more urgency for the twenty three.
That is true.
And they're raising their rates too, right?
I, yes, I gotta let her know my property.
But that money can't go towards our.
Nope, will not go toward ours.
In regards to lingering questions concerning electric aggravation, solar panels and net metering, I would adopt out. Put together a letter using for information for matter at Archer Energy and Treebell. And I hand delivered that on three sixteen and Devon and I hand delivered it on three sixteen seventeen. Some people run away where what they were supposed to do. So because we haven't heard any complaints, so I guess it's okay so far.
Only one complaint?
Oh, yeah, we found one. Sorry. Um, did you all get your letters on aggregation? Um, AES Township got theirs.
Mm-hmm.
Where they count, so. Am I adopted?
Announcing that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're under our sure.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I adopted out, so I wouldn't.
No, you wouldn't get one.
Okay, uh, that's really all I have. So we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll give a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's uh eight forty nine.